Disclaimer, if anybody is recording this other than our TV. We are filming live tonight, but if anybody else is recording, please state so now. Having no one come forward, we'll move on to our open forum. If someone would like to address the committee, please come up and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, my name is Karen, and I'm here tonight to talk about mental health. The mental health of students especially, but also of educators. Through the pandemic, suicide was exactly leading positive path for children and young adults aged 10 to 20 years old. During the pandemic, we suffered two losses in our schools. Addressing mental health itself has to happen every day with every direction and in every level of delivery. We need to crush the stigma before moving forward. We need to let go of insecurities that may think some feel fault as being assigned instead of focus on ways to address root causes and focus on real outcomes, not on what's been checking the loss. We need to address the 365 days a year of focus on aging every day so it ends in a perfect way. The trust, the trust of relationships already there and where it can happen. We need to focus on ensuring our educators are supported so they aren't set up to fail in classrooms from each day kids have in school and are only functioning and listening well. We don't punish them when they can't attend or access their parental loans because they're in fight and flight mode. If we don't address mental health today and now, not next year, these kids won't get taller and more successful and our educators will feel unsupported and rejected. We need to incorporate SCL at every level to find ways to let students experience the hallways to celebrate who they are, their dreams, to hire a staff that reflects the students they face support, to step away from peer discipline knowing that educators, their punishment, do not change anything here and instead focus on results, where it comes to address the needs of positive behavior, to have support on websites to discuss openly and honestly staffed field chambers, big room, to address racism, status of racism within our schools, to ensure that educators are heard and supported so when they step in their classrooms, they don't feel lonely before they start their days. It will take students, staff, parents, caregivers, and community members, but I know we can do it, but it will never happen if we wait in silence and the work needs to start now. I want to let you know that I'll keep them informed to hear voices and voiceless until we get to know them. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the committee? One more time, would anybody else like to address the committee? And one final last time, if anybody would like to address the committee, please step forward. Having no one come forward, we're going to close that portion of our meeting. We're going to move on to communications superintendent.
There are no communications this evening?
Great, then I know there's no student report tonight, so we'll move right on to the superintendent report.
So tonight, I am going to surrender my superintendent report because the people in this room are my superintendent report. I want to thank the 22 recipients of Apples this evening for staying with us through such trying times. As new employees, I told you to take a leap of faith and be with the Lemmonster Public Schools. I never predicted COVID, so that wasn't my fault. But thank you for staying with us, thank you for working with us. You did not train for it, and I'm telling you, you are a gift to our district. So this evening, I'm giving my time over to you, and tonight is a true celebration, and you are honored by every member of the Lemmonster Public Schools. So thank you for being a part of our team.
Jim?
Welcome, everyone. First off, I just wanted to briefly thank Ms. Ann Pickering, Ms. Wanda Toledo, Ms. Laura Donna Rigoni for their hard work in organizing this celebration, and then also Mr. Butch Nato, who's been involved in our Apple construction. But most importantly, and on behalf of the entire district, I would like to offer sincere congratulations to the teachers who are being honored here tonight. Teachers fill an essential role in our society. Good ones make a difference, and great ones can change the very trajectory of a child's life. You are all here because you have worked tirelessly the past three years, and in some cases even more, to make a difference. You are receiving this honor because you have demonstrated the passion, the skill, the effort, and the commitment it takes to be a successful educator in Lemmonster. In any era, this would be a noteworthy accomplishment. This cohort of teachers, however, has had to overcome numerous obstacles along your journey. Many of you have endured the uncertainty of a reduction in force, and all of you have persevered through the challenges of teaching during a pandemic. Despite these barriers, you have all remained steadfast in honing your craft. Thank you, and congratulations on earning your professional status. At this time, I was going to ask Mr. Barry Hudson to join us from the LEA, and then we were going to announce the recipients by school and ask their administration to join us and actually hand you your Apples. The school committee, in order to recognize some distancing guidelines, they're going to stay in their area. But I think as the superintendent said, we all offer our heartfelt thanks and congratulations on this achievement. We're going to start with the Lemmonster High School. So Dr. DeVizinsky, and I think I saw Leah here as well. From Lemmonster High School, Mr. Robert Bergeron. I'm going to also announce our recipients who can't join us tonight, just to recognize their achievement. Their Apples will be going back with the principals. Samantha Como. Neil DiFrancesca. Lori Leveroni. Thank you. If we could have the Fallbrook School Administration join us, please? I've been told this is their second time around. Is that true story? Monique. I go pony, sorry. She made me practice before we did this, that's why I didn't stay. Also earning their apple tonight, but not able to join us, Stephanie Jewett and Caitlin Storo. The Francis Drake School. Caitlin Fitzgerald. Also here tonight, Emily Ippolito. Up next, the Lemmonster Center for Excellence. I'm not sure if she's here tonight, Alexia Dorsey. From the Northwest School. Unable to join us tonight, Taryn DeVito. Kelly Frankie. Also from Northwest, Heather Ledger. That's it Bulldogs. Johnny Appleseed School. First up, Brittany Jones. Also from Johnny Appleseed, Sedona Stewart. Next up, Early Childhood. From the Bennett School, Rebecca Erickson. Also from Early Childhood, Molly Gallagher. And finally, Jordan Roberge. The Skyview School. Brittany Giamo. Sammaset Middle School. And they brought signs. Up first, Jessica Cormier. Joelle Harrington. And last recipient from Sammaset School, Jordan Smith. So at the conclusion of the ceremony, there's going to be a brief respite. We're going to turn it back to the school committee in a moment because they actually have to vote for that. But I did just want to thank both CTEI, whose students in the Culinary Arts Program prepared some treats for us, and then also the good folks at Trout Wells who provided some water. Once again, just on behalf of the entire district, thank you all for your efforts, stuck it through. Hopefully, you feel like it was worth it. We're excited to spend hopefully the remainder of your careers here in Lemmonster, and I know the students are too, so thank you.
Congratulations, everyone. Can I have a motion to suspend our meeting so we can have the reception? All right, everybody in favor? Please enjoy the refreshments and congratulations. I'm going to read our school committee statement. "The committee represents the needs of all Lemmonster Public School students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols, and base our decisions upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high-quality public education in Lemmonster." All right, we're going to move on to presentations and discussions. We did the professional status, and again, congratulations to all those recipients. The athletic advisory update is me. So we had our first athletic advisory meeting this year. We discussed the concession stand at Doyle Field. There was some discussion around who should be running it and then prop it. There was ultimately a decision that the band will continue to run it at this time for the rest of this year.
But it's open for every event?
It's open for every event, so that all teams can benefit from it. We talked about the fall team playoffs, and I know that there were many people watching our illustrious soccer team who had an incredible season. Unfortunately, they had a tough loss this weekend in double overtime, went down to the second round of penalty kicks. But they were extremely competitive. But hats off to all of our fall sports, everyone did absolutely well. We talked about the athletic field, and we are in good shape. It looks like we can have shovels in the ground sometime, hopefully late spring, early summer. And that's been a feat a long time in coming, I think 20 years is kind of how I remember. I don't know Sue, if you, but I think it's been on our agenda for a long time, so it would be nice to see that come into fruition. There is a lot of issues around drainage and those kinds of things that have finally been worked out, so they're really ready to move forward. One of the things that our athletic director has really made clear many times, but particularly now, is the need to have really an EMT/trainer onboard. It really is a safety issue for our students not to have a trainer for basic things around taping, around injuries. All of the, or most of the other communities around us have a trainer, and it's really a very, very needed position. So when we come into budget season, hopefully we can be thinking about that as an added position. It's really a liability to us not to have somebody on staff. The high school got new basketball hoops, new baskets. The floor was redone, the gym looks phenomenal. I know we were sent pictures of it, and it really looks amazing. So things were desperately in need of repair, and we finally have gotten that done. So if anybody hasn't seen it, please check it out. We talked about new equipment, and that's something that's an ongoing issue that the athletic department is going to continually monitor to make sure that there's sort of a schedule for each team to get new equipment so that we can make sure everybody's safe and have appropriate things that they need for that particular sport. Bussing continues to be a huge issue. We don't have any buses to transport students to practices and home games. So that continues to be a struggle, not only for our community, but all communities, but clearly it's impacted Lemmonster. And then there was just a small worry about budget because the athletic department is used to receiving the funds from students who participate in sporting events. And this year, we did away with those fees. So there was a little worry that that's a huge chunk of money that they don't have, but we assured them, that the superintendent assured us that we have enough money to do that this year. And we're going to revisit it, obviously, for next year. But this year, we're able to do that for the students and the families. So that is the end of the advisory update. Next is the MASCE Joint Conference. We had Ron, Brandon, Melissa, the superintendent, and myself attend. Just give everybody a short, Melissa, do you have anything to sort of report?
I think the most common or most relevant, and it was the first one I got to attend even though we were all remotely, was the issues that we're having seem to be the issues that all the communities across the state are having, or that was the common theme, it seems like through all of the meetings that we were in. Staffing issues, behavior issues, budget issues.
Community issues.
Community issues, yeah. So that was the common theme throughout, and I do really hope we can be in person next year because I really did, like so many, struggle with the remote parts.
Brandon, anything?
No, I would echo what Melissa said. It was, we all attended remotely, there was a lot of good information shared in the various different topics, and look forward to it next year.
Ron, do you have anything to report?
No, I just, you know, I had filled out early for, for, to go by remote and come to find out that the rest of the committee had to go remote because plus Hyannis had lost lots of electricity during divorce. And the biggest, the biggest problem, because I was looking through all this, the biggest problem they had was begin, Sheridan has a hard time with their computer system. And remember Eileen, there was a couple of times where all we saw was scratching, you know, and we could hear well, to the point where I just gave up listening to my computer, and I started listening to my cell phone, and I went for a bike ride, listened to the classes. And like Melissa said, they all showed that they all had difficulties this year. Some of them had more difficulties than us. They asked for my opinion, and I told them, "In this day and age, you should be able to get your facts straight on how to use the connectivity on the internet." Because you, I mean you, Brandon, or, they were, we were watching, they were trying to jury-rip things, and it was kind of an embarrassment because it wasn't just one day, it was all the way. The only day they didn't have any problems was the day of the delegates. But the delegate thing, it was quiet until we started voting, and all of a sudden the voices came. But they, they still have a lot to work out with the internet. And yes, the classes they gave were very informative. I enjoyed them, I hope to go back to it next year. But you know, if we're going to do it by remote, which I'm pretty sure they're going to have to, they have to figure it out on what to do.
Now, that's a common theme.
You could see if people were writing things, you know.
Yeah, we were all bouncing in and out of sessions. But the one piece I really picked up on was they entitled this, "Rebuild, Period." "Reimagine, Period," and "Relationships, Period." The sessions that I attended over the two days, I didn't stay for the Saturday, really were looking back and saying, "So what did we learn from this? How can we do better? What is it going to take?" And I must have heard 10 times, "It's going to take a village." There's some real deep, critical conversations that we have to have over immense issues, anywhere from bias, equity, equality, fair, community discourse. And so a few times, I thought that the guest speakers were very good. They said it like it needed to be said, and sometimes it felt a little harsh. But I think we as a team were ready to hear it. I just wish we were there in person. The rooms were very empty. They had one-third participation in the rooms, and the technology did seem to get in the way. And then the whole time, I was just wondering, you know, how many of our kids had to struggle through that as well, right? Because not everybody gets the best service all the time.
I felt bad with what we did on our presentation.
Yeah, that was very powerful.
It was powerful, but they had such a hard time delivering it. When they finally delivered, they went over. They went over the minutes, but they were still, you know, they were still giving it. And it was almost like they trivialized the whole subject. And it just, the message.
There are very few offerings this year compared to, very limited offerings compared to what we normally go to.
Yeah, there's actually many more.
The one thing about being remote that I did like about this session is if I jumped into a room and I wasn't learning anything that was enticing or whatever, I could jump out and hop into another session very easily. Right, instead of running hotels, right, you have to go across the cape. So most of them were very informative. I thought the themes that I heard over and over again was really about the equity pieces, the SCL, our acceleration in learning, how to put the right resources in the right hands, and what does that mean, and how to measure it. I just think that they were in the same place that all of us were at, so it made it a little bit more difficult.
I mean, I do think it's just concerning, but yet reassuring that everybody was impacted, you know, in very similar ways, some to more or less extent, but you know, there was common themes across the state, no matter what kind of school district, small, large, rural city. Everybody was feeling the impact of the pandemic in particular, and the impact on student learning, and the challenges that faced both staff and students.
What really made it stand out was that the storm they had two days before the meeting, it really, you know, if we weren't aware of the difficulties, they really showed. Because Hyannis, right from the time that the contest began, they didn't even know they were going to be able to have it because they had lost everything, everything. They were just slowly bringing it all back, and...
Yeah, that was definitely, you know, a common frustration. But you know, there was certainly lots of good stuff that we brought back, and hopefully we can, you know, put to good use.
And I appreciated that they asked for our feedback, yeah. And so I was honest in my feedback, you know, about the present, not even what they did present, but how it was presented and, you know, some possibilities for next year coming up. Because that's usually a very advantageous time for us.
Now, of course, with the PowerPoint they gave us, and I was talking with Chris, the PowerPoint they gave us, and I'm going to download them, and if I send them to you, will you put them on the website?
Let me check.
You don't know about putting them on the website, but we certainly could disseminate it to the other school committees.
Yeah, but let me call MASCE just to make sure because we paid to participate there, so I know we have authority to have those pieces. I just want to make sure I have the authority.
Because I just want the people out there to see the PowerPoint, to see what was being talked about so that we're not just operating.
Right, but it's, we don't own those necessarily.
So let me just check, send them to me anyways, or send them to Pristine, and let us do that legwork on it. And if we can put them out there, I'd be more than happy to put them out there. All right, moving on to approval of the minutes for October 18. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from October 18th.
Second, Peter. Okay, any admissions, corrections, or errors?
I have some issues with the minutes.
Sue, then Mike.
On Title 2B, Superintendent's call. That should say that the August 16th meeting, not September 20th. And I'm not sure if the word, I said the document is too big. But I did provide everyone on the committee with the superintendent, I was the superintendent from MASCE, and I believe everybody got them, which I wanted to put into the minutes. And I know Ron sent us a little document after the fact as well, from the superintendent's call.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I believe that should be incorporated in the minutes as well.
I don't think something that came after our meeting can be incorporated in the minutes, but that is something that we should, we can acknowledge today that he sent that to us.
But I think it should be.
Yours.
I referenced it in my, in my comments.
And you had provided that, so we put that in for yours, but not mine after. Do you know what I mean? Mike?
So I'll start with the easy things. In 2C, it says, "We are tiring more tutors." That was just probably why we're having a trouble hiring them, which is what it meant.
We're all tired, I think.
Yep, and in Part 4, Finance Committee, I believe, it says, "We do have positions that are open and funded." I think that's supposed to be the word "but" rather than "by," but have not been able to fill the positions yet, so that's a typo. For 2B, I would like it noted in the record that I also stated my objection to the plan to not include lights up front.
Attached to that.
Yes, right, it does have, the minutes reflect your objection to the no lights. They don't object, they don't reflect that I spoke up to object as well.
So you're asking, have your name attached to the statement?
Yeah, Eileen brought it up first, she should get credit first. I then did speak to the same thing. Lastly, on the last page, the motion at the top to approve the budget, the second sentence, "The purpose of the American Rescue Plan is to offset expenses the district incurred because of COVID." Dean made some statement to that effect. I don't see how it's relevant to the motion. This just looks really out of place here. So I'm not sure what the fix is, but as worded, it doesn't really make sense. We passed a budget that was, a revised budget that was a couple million dollars lower than our original budget because of a lower appropriation. That American Rescue Plan has nothing to do with fixing the hole in the general fund. So it doesn't seem relevant there. It is a thing Dean brought up, I don't remember exactly what his point was. But it doesn't seem relevant to me to what it's attached to here. That's the end of my issues.
Anybody else?
Just really quickly, on 6, it mentions my request for mental health information, but I think it was mental health and behavioral interventions.
Anyone else? All right, we have a motion in a second, and we went through corrections. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. And we're going to go to the Finance Subcommittee report.
Finance Subcommittee met tonight. We reviewed the financial report as of the, was it the 15th? Everything's on track as predicted, more or less, with the usual minor variances. We also reviewed warrants, so if you'd like, I will move through those now. So we reviewed the following warrants from the general fund. Warrant 11 totaling $2,368,729.37. Warrant 12 totaling $308,946.44. Warrant 13 totaling $2,636,117.80. Warrant 14 totaling $139,249.40. Warrant 15 totaling $2,228,908.46. Warrant 16 totaling $614,809.58. Warrant 17 totaling $2,518,167.79. Warrant 18 totaling $3,409,258.79. And warrant 19 totaling $2,396,358.68. That is it for the general fund. From grants and revolving. From grants and revolving, we have warrant 11 totaling $319,415.58. Warrant 12 totaling $210,762.11. Warrant 13 totaling $563,485.41. Warrant 14 totaling $18,630.78. Warrant 15 totaling $179,112.16. Warrant 16 totaling $45,257.62. Warrant 17 totaling $512,981.46. Warrant 18 totaling $124,129.86. And finally, warrant 19 totaling $157,114.69. Finance reviewed all these warrants and found them in order, and unanimously recommended their approval, so I make a motion that we approve the warrants as read.
Open to Sue. Second, any questions, comments? All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Is that it for finance?
I'll just also mention, Melanie provided us a nice summary of the Esser 1, 2, and 3 funds, how much they total, how much has been spent so far, what the plan is, what the remaining balance is, that she shared with all, it's in the finance packet that we all have a copy of. We looked at that a little bit. We did ask her to add, each one of those runs out at a different time, and right now, the document doesn't show the end date, so we will get that document again next time with end dates for each of those. So anybody who's interested in the status of the various Esser funds, that's a, it's a pretty useful document, I think. That concludes what we talked about in finance.
Great, thank you. Anything from policy? Ron?
No, there's nothing from policy, except for the second reading that we're going to be having tonight on the student representative of Lemonster School Committee.
All right, why don't we move on to that as an action item? This is the second reading of the student representative. Can I have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept this.
Policy.
Policy for the student representative of Lemonster School Committee.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Brandon, any questions, comments?
I have a question.
Sure.
The policy, the primary part of the policy is laid out in the second paragraph, in which we have one representative from each of the three high schools, and their rotating position. I have no objection to that, it seems like a really good solution. It's not what Mass General Law specifies, and so I was wondering if we have checked to see if this is going to comport with what we're required to do. Mass General Law says there's supposed to be five students, and they get to elect their chair, which is not exactly what we do.
So we can remand it to legal, I didn't.
Like I said, I have no objection to doing it this way. It seems like a good plan, I just don't know if it fulfills our requirements.
I'll run it by Mark, just to make sure. So Ron, do you want to rescind your motion, and then we'll continue to set our next one?
I also wanted to, my comment.
Just move it closer to you, Ron.
I wanted to piggyback on, I want to make my comment. I, I don't know how many times I've read this, it never hit me in the head. The second paragraph, yebba-dabba-dabba-dabba, and it says, "Shall be residents of the Lemons, so that excludes any kids who are school choice." Am I right or am I wrong?
You're correct, it would have to be a resident of Lemonster, just like the school needs to be a representative of a resident of Lemonster.
Every, every one of the example policy we looked at required the student to be a resident of the city that the school was in. So that's why we went in that direction.
Yeah, I, you know, I guess, I must be very, I must be, I must have something wrong somewhere here, and nothing's connected. I don't know if we should check with legal.
I'm going to anyway. So I'm going to run the whole policy by him.
Okay. Because I'm afraid that we're almost teetering, watering, running, geeking towards exclusionary practice.
Well, he'll be able to detect that pretty quickly, but I can bring up.
Okay, that's just me, I'm sorry.
It's an interesting point. Mass General Law, if I remember correctly, is silent on that particular issue.
Is what?
Mass General Law, I believe, if I remember correctly, is silent on that particular issue. But every school committee member is required to be a resident of Lemonster. So it would make sense for the student representative to be as well.
And all the other houses tend to have the same thing.
Well, I.
All right, we'll have Mark look at it.
Okay.
Also, just a little minor thing, there's no K in ad hoc down at the very last end.
Sorry, I, it's just, oh, yeah.
It's just H I C.
That was a typo. Sue.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, I know. All right, I can run that by Mark.
I'll rescind the motion.
Oh, thank you.
I make a motion to rescind the motion.
You don't have to make a motion, just have to rescind it.
Okay.
Rescind it, so thank you. All right, so now we're on to the CAPS representative. Sue has been the CAPS representative for. So you've always done a wonderful job in that position, and since you will be leaving our committee, we need to nominate a new representative. And that way, I believe there's a meeting in December. And that way, they, and that way, you can introduce that person and kind of give them some guidance. And I would like to nominate Melissa to that position. I don't know if anybody else. Would anybody else, any other? All right, Melissa, would you be willing to accept that position?
Absolutely, thank you.
All right, all those in favor? You'll finish your turn, but she will.
I'll go with you.
But you'll finish your turn.
If you give her the document that we mentioned earlier, it's all.
All right, and so we had a motion, and I believe all those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Thank you. And new or old business? We have the enrollment report in our packet, as well as the HR report. We have dates. Is there any other new or old business to come before the meeting? A little stuff?
Two quick, well, maybe three. Just a reminder that the theater department is running PUPS this weekend on Friday and Saturday for the Off-School Play. I would like to get that update on interventions, hopefully, for the next meeting. And then I'd like at some point there to be a discussion, I overheard a little bit of it in finance, but just a discussion about the vocational school admissions and policies.
Do you have a specific question?
So I guess my concern is, I've heard there's no waiting list, but I know it's not completely an open enrollment either. That there is sort of a process. Not every child who wants to be in gets to be in, so I'd like to know what the process is for kids being chosen.
That's definitely not a, that's not finance, so. I think all of us are policy.
But it was referenced in all of it.
Yep, yeah, it was mentioned.
Anybody else for new rule of business? Okay, having nobody come forward, I need a motion to adjourn.
I'll say.
Perfect, all those in favor? Awesome, have a good night, everyone, and thank you very much.